Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on August 18th, 2016 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogoszewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Datta? Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I'd like to read a motion to go to an executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this, I'm sorry, resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: A. The matters to be discussed are student matter, personal matters, and vendor contract negotiations; and B. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go to executive session.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Sessions? Okay, we're going to executive session. We'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you. Okay, welcome to the, welcome to the, hello and welcome to the August 24th, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. We're back from executive session. Appreciate your patience. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogoszewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Datta?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda. And now I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. It's my pleasure to share some wonderful news that's going on throughout the district with the board and the public. Newsweek recently published a list of 500 best high schools in the country. This is out of over 16,000 high schools in the country. Congratulations to the Student Staff Administration and parents of Hillsborough High School, which made the magazine's list at number 217. It is through the hard work and dedication of the Hillsborough High School family that the school receives such accolades as this. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School. Although many people may think that the summer months are quiet in our schools, that is definitely not the case. During the summer, we had several exceptional programs that provide our students with amazing enrichment and academic opportunities. This summer, at the high school, the district's special services department ran its extended school year program. The program was attended by approximately 230 students and led by more than 50 staff members with the assistance of over 130 student volunteers. The goal of the program is to ensure that the district's students with special needs will not experience significant regression in skills during the prolonged summer break. This summer, the program rang, ran from July 5th through August 12th. Thank you to all the teachers, staff members, and volunteers who made this program such a wonderful experience for our special needs students. During the weeks of July 11th and July 18th, the district's English Language Learner Summer Program was held at Hillsborough Elementary School. And the Summer Enrichment Program was also held at Woodfern Elementary School. Approximately 100 of our district's ELL students participate in Hillsborough's two-week-long Summer Enrichment Program for students in kindergarten through 11th grade. The program is an academic and enrichment experience that provides opportunities for students to continue their English acquisition during the summertime, both in classrooms as well as via local field trips. The program focuses on activities that many students who attend the program may not have access to, including a field trip to the Morris Museum, as well as in-house presentations by groups such as the Franklin Institute and Insectropolis. That sounds pretty interesting. This year, the district's annual Summer Enrichment Program gave students going through the transitional primary through 6th grade the opportunity to spend a week learning something new or honing already-acquired skills. Though a smaller program this year due to the relocation to Woodfern as the middle school parking lot underwent construction, the district received over 325 registrants from township students for classes that ranged from American Girl Doll to theater to robots and knitting, all taught by Hillsborough teachers. The program is something that many of our students look forward to every summer. I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the staff members who make these excellent programs available to all of our students every summer. I would also like to just take a quick, a quick moment and give the board and the community an update on where we are with our construction projects. First, let me, let's go into... This is our turf field. Here's some pictures. Hopefully you can see them. This is our new athletic turf field. Looks very nice. We're at the end stages of completion. We just need to finish a few things, including putting up our new goalposts. You can see this is a field without goalposts, but this is right on time. It's going to come in slightly under budget. It'll be finished up this week. So that's good news. Also, to share with you, we did some completion of some projects for our Energy Savings Improvement Plan. These are the heating and ventilation units on the Amwell roadside of Hillsborough Elementary School, down that wing. You can see these units are ceiling units. These are brandy new and are looking good. That project also finished on time. Here's a few different looks at them. If you had an opportunity to actually see what they looked like before, they certainly needed to be replaced and fixed. And these are more energy efficient. And finally, the new paving and parking lot over at our middle school. They just finished lining it. Here's a few different snapshots of what it looks like. They had to build a retaining wall, repave the entire lot. They also changed the traffic pattern to make it safer for our students as they're dropped off in the morning. Kind of gives you a sense of the scope of the project. New islands were completed. You can see that this is area that is soiled right now. All of this will be landscaped and will be seeded during the fall. So that kind of gives you a sense of where we are in the project. And we anticipate that all of the projects will be completed this week, and we will give a final closeout report once we complete all of those closeout documents.
Just real quick, with the slight reconfiguration with the middle school now, parents will be able to drop off their students at the middle school at the beginning of, in the morning, as opposed to having to drop them off at Triangle.
Yeah, Dr. Trabowski will be sending out information about the new, the new traffic patterns and the new flow. That's what I have for my report tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Okay, now I'd like to open it up to committee reports. And we'll start with operations. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Operations met on Wednesday, August 17th. We had a number of items on the agenda, a few of which Dr. Schiff just spoke about. So I'm going to try to omit those from mine to keep mine a little more brief. The first item up was the renewal of the food service contract with Sedexo, a little bit delayed this year as we are waiting to, for the calculation of the CPI increase that's booked into the contract. The increase is .5 percent. Then we moved on to transportation contracts. And we had a little snag this year in that one of our bus contractors walked away from their contract. This contract was for 12 triple-tier routes. That's like 36 trips. Could be as much as 1,800 students affected. This was only just less than a month before, about a month before the first day of school. Mr. Mahmood and our transportation supervisor, Mrs. Lewis, worked on that. And we were able to fill those 12 buses in a few different ways. We, a couple of our other contractors, we put out a request for quotes. We got some quotes back. We were able to fill some with some other contractors. And we're also leasing about a half dozen buses to get us over this hurdle. This was a, this, I'm making it sound very easy, but this wasn't easy. This was a, could have been a real disaster for about, you know, a quarter of our students a month before, three weeks before school starts. But we were able to get it fixed up. So thank you, Mr. Mahmood, and your team for that. There were a routine inspection at the, of the high school, found some mold at the auditorium that required some remediation. That has been taken care of and is possibly ongoing or is done by now?
It's continuing.
It's continuing. And that's going to be ready for the, for the start of the school year, probably. We also had discussion about, once again, about the transportation of non-public students. As we've discussed every year over the last couple of years, the district can only, is only allowed to spend $884 per student, that's a state law, to transport non-public students to their schools. If the cost for our bus contractors rises above $884 per student, then the student can receive $884 from us in lieu of transportation. Of course, we are sensitive to the fact that most families that have students that attend St. Ange or Immaculate Conception School or Immaculate High School would prefer to have transportation and not $884. Unfortunately, due to declining enrollment at those schools, the cost has risen significantly above $884 per student. And despite some valiant efforts, once again on the behalf of Mr. Mahmood and Mrs. Lewis, we, we were unable to provide transportation this year for the non-public students. Let's see. Okay, this, we discussed a legal matter, which I'm not at liberty to speak about, the summer construction projects, including one that, I don't know if you mentioned, Dr. Schiff, the partial roof replacement at the Woods Road School. That's another one that we, that we are talking about. Let's see. Settlement agreement, that's, I'm not at liberty to discuss that. The last thing on our agenda last week was a discussion about the athletic busing. Athletic contractors maybe have been expressed an interest in receiving maybe like what I could characterize as a tentative, season-long schedule of busing. Right now, we provide our busing contractors with notice a week, in the week prior, for the next week coming up for the athletic events that need to be bussed. We only provide about a week or so notice because events can change so rapidly. So that's the committed notice. So we explored the possibility that would, it would be beneficial both to the contractors and to the school district if we might not provide a tentative schedule, which can not be enforced by either party, but a tentative schedule that may help bus contractors with their planning. This is something that Dr. Schiff is going to explore administratively with the athletic director. And that's, I think, all I'll say about it now, but it's something that the operations committee seriously would like you to consider. And that is, that was what was discussed. Seriously consider a tentative schedule for the athletic bus runs. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Education, Mrs. Haas?
The education committee, as it were, met on Thursday, August 18th, and discussed quite a few important matters. First, we approved the mathematics TP curriculum. And then, we reviewed the entire science curriculum from kindergarten through high school, which has been entirely revised. And I'd just like to thank all the people in our science, various science departments who worked throughout the summer to get this massive job done. So all of those are on the agenda for approval. We approved a new biology textbook. Our former textbook for AP Biology was over 10 years old and in need of updating. We also had a discussion about the 2017-18 district calendar. And we are hopefully going to bring that out in September?
Yes.
Okay. We put our comments to it, but there are various other people who need to look at various things. So that will hopefully take place over the next couple of weeks. As far as informational items go, we had an update on high school graduation requirements. And in true form, the Department of Education has put out a new document that sort of explains, but whatever. Hi. Sort of explains the new high school graduation requirements. And to sum it, sum it up, we used to have something called the HESPA that everybody took in 11th grade. And it sort of made sense as a high school graduation test. Now, kids will be taking the Algebra I as part of their high school graduation requirement. Unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, that could take place anywhere from 8th grade or even 7th grade onward. And the English Language section is a 10th grade test. So as a person who cares about rigor in our district, I'm not very excited about that. But hopefully, it's a fluid situation. And the Department of Education will continue to look at some of the strange things that have happened since park testing came into our lives. Otherwise, we had a review of our Department of Education. We had a corrective action plan and a response to that. And all corrective actions were successfully implemented and approved by the Department of Education. So that file is now closed. And we have also on our agenda a statement of assurance on the annual professional development and mentoring plan. So that's the education committee report.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mrs. Santafonte's not here, but I'll report out for the Human Resources Committee. Human Resources Committee met on Monday, August 15th. Items that were discussed were an update on the 2016-17 staffing in terms of open positions in the state of hiring. And additionally, there was an update on the 2016-17 student enrollment and, and then how that matches up with the, with the staffing matrix in terms of class size. And I believe that those numbers now are closed in terms of enrollment, which determines the, the number of sessions.
We have one more section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We also reviewed an update to the coaching evaluation that the administration had provided to the, to the committee. And it still needs to be finalized, but the, but the, the evaluation for coaches now is going to align more with how teachers are evaluated and the rubric that is being used in terms of their meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, the same type of scoring. And then there were four major criteria, which were presented to us with descriptions and different outcomes for how those, those different criteria are evaluated. So we were pleased to see advancement on that. And then, we also had a number of, an update on a personnel matter and other confidential items. That was the Human Resources Committee. For the Governance Committee, that Governance Committee also met on August 15th. And items, I'm sorry, one other item on the, on the HR was, was initial discussion with regard to the superintendent goals for 2016-17. The way the practice that the board has is it'll start off in Human Resources Committee, and then it'll broaden out to the, to the entire board. So that was reviewed, discussed. The input from, from that committee was then incorporated. And now the full board is going through that process for the superintendent goals. Okay. Governance Committee met on Monday, August 15th. And the main focus on that was the strategic plan. So we reviewed the, the history with regard to community inputs, the session that we had that was moderated by, by our facilitator, and then work that was advanced over the summer in terms of trying to take that information, try to hone it down to, to put it in a more presentable format. And actually, I'll review that with the everybody right now. So if you want to, actually, can you put that right here? And I'll just drive. So as, as I mentioned, our current strategic plan, we're getting towards the end of that. The strategic plan was, we enacted, the board enacted a while ago based on a recommendation, recommendations from Dr. Schiff focusing on education, human resources operations. You can see where, you know, this strategic plan that was initiated five, four years ago, you can see a lot of things that have happened over the past couple of years have been the fruition of that. So the expansion of the, of the world languages, the ESIP for having a more efficient, more, more energy-efficient systems and being able to do that without taxpayer expense, looking at areas of revenue generation, and then the board in terms of governance, governance structure. So it's kind of just shows the power of having a district plan. It allows the, allows to set kind of the North Star for the district in which both the board and the administration, the entire district can move towards, and really focusing on, on endeavors that will enrichen the, the students and the staff and facilities. So we had a number of input sessions. There were four input sessions. And the input in there was tabulated and then summarized into a strategic framework, which looked at about eight different areas in which you can kind of categorize. So eight's too big of a number, but it includes things like maximizing college readiness, maximizing career readiness, individualizing learning opportunities, providing optimal early childhood education, maximizing non-academic life enrichment, increasing ties to the local community and to the world community, instilling life capabilities. So over the summer, we tried to, again, eight, eight, eight goals, eight initiatives is, is, is too much. It becomes more like a wish list as opposed to a strategic plan. So we had a board dialogue. We focused on what was important to the board. It was in a, a meeting that we had in the, in the late spring. And from that, we have a strategic framework, which we're now honing it down to five pillars. So the vision is, you know, learning empowers life beyond high school district. We're here to educate students, but then also empower them so that when they leave Hillsborough High School, they're very productive, well-learned students and can contribute to society. The mission is similar to what we had currently is to provide a superior education for all students. So lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. And then the strategic imperatives are maximizing college readiness, maximizing career readiness, individualizing learning opportunities, and providing optimal early childhood education, and enhancing student life. And you could see listed are some of the key initiatives that were identified, both from the, the public and from the boards in the various meetings. And then throughout there, you look at different enablers. So program, staff, facility, technology, finance. So this is the initial stage. This kind of sets the framework for how we're going to define what the strategic plan is. And what's important is that a lot of these initiatives are rather big. They're going to require considerable research, considerable planning, and then implementation, considerable resources. So whether it's improving the program for academic, implementing a program for vocational studies, looking at early childhood education, those are going to require substantial planning from a curriculum perspective, from a staffing perspective, from a finance perspective. So there's, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done. So in terms of steps that the district needs to do is, I kind of broke this up into, into three years, just to get an idea of the scale of, of things that would happen. So this current year, calling it the year of study. So there'll be a number of working groups that I'll be focusing on the, the, the five different strategic initiatives to look at, to research. What are the best practices? What are benchmarks, both locally and throughout the, the nation? What are, what are the, the resources that are required? What is the evidence for the benefits of different things? So for example, on, on early childhood education, what, what data demonstrates the value for that investment? So with that, throughout the academic year, those working groups will be investigating. They'll maybe be visiting other schools. They'll be looking at research, peer-reviewed research to find what the best results are. And then they'll make a, a report on that, those findings, and then report, make a recommendation. That recommendation then comes to the board for us to decide, is this something that we're willing to pursue and, and willing to move forward? So there may be things on, on that, in that group of five, that the board says, you know what, we're not, we're not, we're not convinced by the evidence. We think that the, the, the investment required should be prioritized in, in one of these other areas. So it's, it's to provide data, information, well-researched data to the board so that the board can make an educated decision as to say, okay, we feel that it's important for this district to be moving forward on these particular initiatives. The ones that the board approves that says that we should, there's going to be a planning in terms of those different initiatives, what's required from a budget, what's required from curriculum. Some of those things may require additional funding via referendum. And so those different types of things would happen in kind of the Phase Two period. And then, and then once all of those gets approved, those things that do get approved then would be implementation. So the period of time, it may not, it may be a year, it may be more. It's kind of the Phase Three, which is the actual implementation. So what I wanted to focus on was what, what would be happening this, this coming year. And I'd like to task the administration to lead these different working groups to provide information so that the board may have an ability to decide and have an educated decision and recommendation for that at the end of the year. In terms of the way that the budget works, is that the budget for the, for the following year happens in the, in the late winter to early spring timeframe. So as the working groups find, if they find items that could be done, what I call quick wins, they should definitely be considered as part of the 1780, 1718 budget process. And again, so with regard to those five different initiatives, again, these are the ones that, that bubbled, bubbled up from community input. And then when we had the board discussion, I'm not stating right now that all five of those are ones that we are going to commit to at this point, or that we will commit to in the future. But we feel that it's worth, we've listened to the, the community, and we feel it's worth investigating so that we have the right amount of information so that then we can make the appropriate actions. So that's, that's kind of an update with regard to the strategic plan and, and what we'll be doing this following year. So I'll just open it up to the board to see if they have any questions or comments.
This morning, 1.3 million jobs opened up this year, or 2015, I'm not sure. 2015, or maybe this year, within the last year, 1.3 million STEM positions, and a little over 650,000 were filled. So we're a little short nationwide on this.
Yep. So things like that are, would be very important information to go into those, to that investigation, those reports. Any other?
Okay.
All right. Just wanted to give everybody an update, and we'll continue on with the, with the board meeting. Thank you very much. I'll open it up now to the public for comments from the public. And this can be both on either new business or on items in the action agenda. If you, as you come up, if you can state your name. And let me just read my disclaimer real quick, if I can find it. There we go. We very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times at the board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is now. For any item that's listed on the agenda or new business, there will be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And before you make a comment, please state your name and address, group affiliation, if, as appropriate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marissa Sladek at 681 Dover Court. And I've got several different things that I would like to address with the board. First of all, the new website that has been shared. I'm wondering if TyNet can be put on to the, the right-hand side. So that way, parents who... I'm wondering if TyNet can be put on to the right-hand side so that way parents who need to go on there can have easier access instead of clicking on multiple different areas to be able to do that. We're, we should be afforded as much access to our children's educational records as the other typical parents are in district. Next, I'm waiting to hear if there was any feedback from the concern that I had brought out several months ago in regards to the meeting that was held by Dr. Schiff with the former director and myself and then him, where I was told that I was a difficult parent because I had filed an enforcement of mediation that, by the way, the state had agreed with me and had said that I was in the right on that one. I pride myself on being an educated advocate because that's what I do. That's my job is as a non-attorney advocate, and I would appreciate not being told I was not collaborative, an uneducated person. So I'm wondering where that is, where, what am I going to have back? Am I going to at least get an apology for being told that I'm uneducated and not collaborative? And lastly, more importantly, I'm very concerned with the state that things are in with our district. We pride ourselves on being an award-winning district. And my concern is that the current contract of Dr. Schiff makes it difficult for those parents on our side to, to think about some of the messages that are being shared. The message that is being shared with the parents is that the teachers, the staff, the administration, you guys are more important than the teachers, the staff, the coaches, the custodians, the secretaries. That my concern is that, that the $22,000 could have been spent more wisely elsewhere. We've got this huge discrepancy between what, what is needed, what the teachers who give of their time with clubs, who do that for free, who have things that they've give, they're not, they're not doing it because they want money. They're doing it out of the goodness of their heart, but there should be some sort of compensation. And my concern is that that money could have been used to compensate those people. It just, it doesn't make sense. We rest on the laurels of the, the teachers and the good things that are going on here, and yet they're the ones that aren't getting recognized. They're the ones that should be recognized. I, it just, it doesn't make sense that we could spend an undisclosed amount of money to beautify the high school, to put roses in the high school for the superintendent, but we can't pay the people who would put those in a fair amount of wages because we're not giving them the overtime to do it. They're the ones that are the heart and soul of, of our district, the people who work here, the people who invest their lives, they should be fairly compensated. And my concern is that instead of showing them that they matter, we're showing Dr. Schiff that him doing his job that he should be doing every other day is what matters and that he's getting a bonus. Why aren't the teachers getting a fair contract for what they do every day? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let others address the negotiations issue, but Mrs. Sladak, I never said that you were uneducated, ever. No, I did not. I did, however, share with you, as you were being very critical of teachers and administrators in the district, how much the teachers and administrators care about your children. I'm shocked that you would say that in public. It is clearly inaccurate, very disappointing.
And with, with regard to negotiations, we're in the negotiation process. And, and so we're continuing to make progress and we continue to meet with them and we look forward to, to arriving at a tentative agreement that, that both parties can ratify. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tom Harkins. I live at 185 Westcott Road. I was coming to get some additional information regarding the non-public school busing and why a bid was not able to, or final contract was not able to be come about. I understand the enrollment issue and the $884 per student payment that can be made, but it doesn't sound like in some of the letters we've received from Immaculata, my son is going to be a freshman at Immaculata this year, that there was some concern over, I guess, a mutual agreement or mutual contract going in place where Hillsborough may pay the $884 and allow Immaculata, Immacula Conception, St. Anne's, whether it's through their school or the parents, to pay the above and beyond to offset that. So we can have school busing rather than $884 per student. It sounded like there was some legal concern over some contract options, and I was curious if there was some explanation we can get on that. There was also some concern over, I guess on August 8th, there was a notice the bidders sent out raising some concern with the bus companies not going into what they referred to as side deals. The wording in that sounded a little bit aggressive, and I guess I see a little bit of concern that that wording may prevent some bus companies from putting bids directly to Immaculata, Immacula Conception, or St. Anne's if they were to go out to bid for themselves instead of coming through the public school, through the school district. But a letter like that is making the bus companies at least appear that there may be some legal concern if they get into any form of contract with these non-public schools. And is that the case? Is there a way that that wording can be softened or can be clarified with the bus companies that, that is not, there's no legal ramification to them coming into direct bid with the non-private schools? And is that, is there anything that the school district is, or the bus transportation is doing to assist the private schools with, you know, coming, potentially coming to a contract for themselves?
Mr. Membert?
Sure. Thank you for the question. Couple of things I'd like to go over, if I may, a couple of facts first for the audience. I guess there'll be a few more parents probably that have concerns. Couple of the facts regarding the, the non-public school situation as far as busing. So we did begin this process back in April, April 26th, where we actually went out to bid. It was our intent to bus our non-public school students, obviously. The law requires us to do the following. It does require us to go out to bid either on our own or through an agency, in this case it would be the ESC. The law requires us to advise our parents by August 1st if we're unable to secure transportation. Let me just give you a little bit of things that we did as far as trying to get the busing, secure busing. We went out to bid seven times. We went out four times via the ESC through the, the Middlesex ESC. The district went out to bid once on its own, and then we went out to bid two additional times with the Somerset ESC. So the law requires once, we went out seven times. We also, just to give you an idea, as far as communications, we were able to talk to the non-public school administrators. We met twice with them. We talked to a couple of parents, lots of parents. We also sent out two letters. By law, we're required to send out one. We sent out two letters to the parents, one on July 26th indicating what we've done so far and we're trying to secure it. We went back on October 15th and said, the last bid came in, there were no bidders. So talking about the question you have, there were two items that came up before us that were, I can't even call them options, they were proposed. One of the options was to look at a calendar that was different than the actual school calendar. So in essence, a calendar that reflected 150 days as opposed to 180 days. When we initially had some conversation with the state folks over at Trenton about this, they had said to us, yeah, it sounds like a good idea, we're, we're going to, we're going to say okay to this. We have to then go to the county office to get approval on, on our bids. In this case, we sent out the bid. The county office looked at the calendar of Immacula High, Immaculata High School and said, hey, they have 180 days, your bid has 150, no, we're not going to approve it. We're going to ask you to go to your attorney. If your attorney approves it, we will approve it. We then got our attorney involved. He gave us an opinion on that, and his opinion was that we are not to proceed with anything less than the actual number of days on the bid, which is 180 days. The second item that you mentioned was another opportunity, and that's the letter I think you're referring to that we sent out under counsel's advice. Any public school contract bid cannot be negotiated after the fact. So what we had here is a, but we heard that a bus company was having a negotiated deal on the side with a public bid with a contractor. That is collusion, that is bid rigging, that is against the law. We also spoke to our attorney and we were advised directly, if we got wind that something like that was happening, we had to notify all the bidders and notify everybody that if that was happening, that that would be a violation of public school contracts law, not only are the bidders, you know, not allowed to do that, but the district's not allowed to do that. So I see your point where you can say that letter was sort of strong in the wording, but the letter was intended so that we can avoid collusion and/or public bid rigging.
So can there be any clarification out to the bus companies that them having direct contract with the non-public schools is not any legal concern? And then is there anything, was there any consideration of the opportunity for the parents to pay the above $884 instead of, you know, it sounds like this Hillsborough School District said they'll pay the $884 if it's above that, we can't afford that. Was the consideration of finding, having the parents pay the difference to allow the busing, was that considered and is that legal?
It is not legal for the parents to pay the additional money. If the school went on its own, if we gave our parents the 884 and we gave you the two payments of the Aiden Lou, the school can contract on its own a bus company, and then the school could pay the bus company directly. The school district either is going to pay the Aiden Lou or provide the buses. We cannot negotiate in between. So in this case, when we exhausted seven bids, we came back and said, we're going to provide the 884 because even until the last bid, we were hopeful that somebody would take it. But to be very honest with you, the enrollment dropped. We had 125 kids, actually 124 kids last year. This year, we're looking at 92. To fill a 54-passenger bus, we need 108 kids. So vendors, you know, vendors are vendor, they're looking to make money to be, we all know this. So they were short about $15,000, nobody bid.
So to answer, to answer the question, the solution is for the non-publics to put together a bid and contract with a, with a bus company or some other transportation company independently. And then, then that would be paid for either through the, through the, through the non-public schools or through the, the parents.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Underco, 3 Kramer Lane. I'm here to talk about the non-public transportation issue as well, and I do echo the concerns of the previous gentleman. I do understand the per-student fee from the state and that you're bound in certain ways, but my question is, and I have two points, has the district looked to work for outside-of-the-box solutions such as tiered busing and including the non-public routes with the public routes? And I appreciate, I know the past couple of years we have had this issue, and I appreciate everything that's been done to accommodate and resolve the issue previously, but packaging the bids with tiered routes is something that could be looked at. And the other one, which is even more non-traditional, but is it possible to include the public school kids with the non-public on routes that take them to a central location? And I'm getting this information from a website with the state rules here, but can we round up the children on the public bus, take them to one of the schools such as the high school where everyone goes, or the middle school, and then get two buses from a central location that could take the children to Immacula Conception, Immaculata, and St. Anne's as a compromise, an alternative solution? Can that be looked at?
Okay. I think I can answer the first question. The second one's a little more creative. I'd have to go back to our transportation director. I, I wouldn't be able to answer that at the podium. However, the first question regarding the tiering, I get that. We discussed it with our board. For years, we were, it was a part of the tiering, the non-public school students were being transported. When we spoke to our transportation directors, her biggest challenge with this is if she was going to tier, we right now have a three-tiered process, and it's efficient, it's, it meets our efficiency standards with the county. If we were to do that, we would have to go to a two-tiered process, which would take away the efficiency standards we're required to have. So we went through it, we looked at the tiering, and that was something that if we were going to do again, we don't believe we can do it with the two tiers, actually reduce our efficiency down to two tiers instead of three. The second half to your question, I don't know. I would have to speak to, to our transportation supervisor. I'm just not sure the logistical piece of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Picarello, 1108 Washington Common. I recently heard about the settlement issue and I decided to write you a letter last week, but took the opportunity to make my husband put the kids to bed and read it to you myself. Dear members of the Hillsborough Board of Education, my husband and I are Hillsborough residents of the past 10 years and Hillsborough-based business owners. Our son is about to enter kindergarten in two weeks, and I'm concerned that the board has not made more progress in reaching a fair settlement with the HEA. My husband and I chose Hillsborough to live in for many reasons, but the primary one being the quality of the school district and its special education program. We had a wonderful experience so far with the preschool program at Woods Road. Teachers have been positive about our son's skills and traits, responsive with communication about his progress, understanding when our daughter's heart surgery has kept us at the hospital, and knowledgeable about resources to help our son improve. We're impressed with the attitude and enthusiasm we feel from the welcome letter we just received from the principal of HES. Teachers are hardworking people who plan, create, research, and think about our kids on their own time, at night and on the weekends, not just during the hours for which they are paid. The teachers are not asking for anything unreasonable, just a normal living wage increase. They're making less now than in 2010. My daily coffee at Dunkin' Donuts has gone up 30 cents since 2010, and you can imagine all the other costs in New Jersey that have as well. Your employees' bills surely have not gone down, and they have families to take care of, too. Hillsborough should strive to retain all of the excellent teachers we have hired by maintaining a competitive wage. This is not the beginning of the school year I want for my kindergartner. He deserves teachers that are unstressed, energized, and prepared to help him with this big transition, not teachers who have to limit their time in school as a last resort because their hard work is not being valued and respected. These teachers have spent years giving to all of our children of their time, effort, and knowledge. We all sacrifice things so that our children can have the best education and a promising future. As a parent and taxpayer, I have no problem giving back what I can to have the best education and a promise, I'm sorry, to have, giving back what is only fair to help the teachers continue to be successful in educating our children and keeping our community thriving. I urge the board to come to a fair settlement soon and start our new school year off on the most positive and collaborative start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, as well as Hillsborough Education Association. Good evening, members of the board. This is our last meeting before the start of a new school year. Typically, this time is one that is met with welcome-back messages laden with hope and aspirations for the coming year, but you've already sent a message to your employees, one bereft of optimism or ambition. You've repeatedly told them, in spite of continued acknowledgement as exceptional public schools, that their dedication and achievement is not valued. They are given can'ts that are truly won'ts because when something is deemed strategic or necessary, it is pursued without hesitation. Millions of dollars have been allocated for technology that could have lasted years longer. Over $12,000 was spent for the vanity etching of H's in the tops of devices, and there's a seemingly unlimited source of funding for various other initiatives that have questionable impact within the classroom. Yet the very people tasked with ensuring the success of these initiatives find themselves undervalued and dismissed. Over the past few months, you've had multiple opportunities to communicate with our members, to collectively express your priorities, but they were offered excuses and platitudes in recognition of dedication and expertise. As I said, our schools continue to achieve national recognition, and let me assure you that the aforementioned responses have nothing to do with that success. In recognition of this success, your employees have sought a fair contract that is reflective of their excellence and one that takes into account that not long ago, these very same employees took steps to sustain the district. Furlough days and higher-than-average and earlier-than-required healthcare contributions are only a few of the ways that your employees have financially supported this district. This year alone, you have collected in excess of $3 million from your employees. Yet it apparently comes at a surprise that after five years of negative take-home pay, they seek a modicum of support from you. John F. Kennedy said, "You cannot negotiate with people who say what's mine is mine and what's yours is negotiable." what's yours is negotiable." And yet, this is the sentiment that has met your employees over the last few months. You are quick to take help from your, from your staff members, but unwilling to give it. To the members of the board who did not sit across from them, you have the opportunity to change the narrative that has pervaded these discussions, to truly meet the charge of your elected position. The false pretense of responsibility to the taxpayer has rung hollow. The taxpayers want quality schools that provide exceptional education and increased property value. Thus far, employees have achieved that in spite of misaligned priorities, but how long can this unbalanced equation yield results? So as we begin the school year, I ask the entire board to reflect upon the messages that have been sent to the staff, students, and community, and ask themselves if they are in agreement. Is this the responsibility you have been elected to uphold? I think not. The taxpayers want quality schools and exceptional education, and again, I say this has been achieved in spite of the aforementioned, not because of it. None of these things will matter without a dedicated, motivated staff. Ultimately, you will issue some iteration of a welcome-back communication. And while this is our last meeting before the school year begins, it is not your last opportunity to send the correct message. I task all of you, and more importantly, believe that the taxpayers task you with sending the correct one. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Goodhue.
Suzanne Rolka, Eves Drive. I want to take this time to share my disappointment regarding this Board of Education. Dr. Schiff is getting the highest salary allowed under the law to do a job, a job that quite frankly is dependent on the teachers. Because he is getting the maximum salary, the board gives merit bonuses based on his goals that have been set. He recently gained a 3.33% bonus after the district achieved a 3.50 or higher in its student growth objectives, which are teacher-set goals for student growth and achievement. Yet our teachers are still without a contract, which has now affected our students. He also earned another 3.33% bonus because he reduced the custodial expenditure. Yet he is the same person that has a history of hiring people for positions at a much higher salary than their predecessors. For example, the current transportation supervisor who was hired in October of 2014 got a starting salary of $85,000, which was prorated through June of 2015. She then received a raise and was making $86,258 for the 2015-16 school year. The previous transportation supervisor who figured out a way to save this district $1.5 million was only making $58,481. Another example are the directors of special services that have been hired under his tenure. The current one has been hired at a salary of $144,000, which was higher than the previous director who left the position, earning a salary of $138,738. I've never known this district to not hold an open house until now. That was something all the kids in this district would look forward to. It was a chance for them to meet their teachers, see who their fellow classmates were, and get excited for the upcoming school year. But because this, this board has not been able to agree to a teacher's contract, the students that this district claimed to care about and want the best for now will suffer. I asked the board and Dr. Schiff to reconsider and have the open houses at the elementary schools either September 1st or September 2nd, as the teachers will be there anyway for in-service days. The open houses were usually 30 minutes in the morning. Is it really that hard to give up 30 minutes on a teacher-in-service day to hold these open houses? The teachers are there anyway, and they have in the past, and even on the current school calendar, had teacher-in-service days in the latter half of the school day. I also ask as a taxpayer to justify how those goals were not part of the job Dr. Schiff was hired to do, a job that pays him the maximum amount. And I asked the Board of Education to set a goal that will deduct 1% from Dr. Schiff's merit bonus for every month the teachers are without a contract. Then I'm sure you guys will do whatever is needed to get them the one that they deserve.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm sorry, I'm back. Marissa Sladek, 681 Dover Court, Unit E. I'm here again to address because I, I'm not satisfied with the response. I'm, I'm here because my child, when he was in third grade, he's in fifth grade, had an IEP that was not followed. Not only was it not followed, but it was blatantly not followed. When not only I brought out to the teacher's attention that it was not followed, and my son brought out to the teacher's attention was not followed, I was ignored. I brought it to everybody's attention. I actually brought it to the school board's attention as well because he didn't want to go to school. He had such terrible anxiety as a result, he begged us to not send him to school, and he would hide underneath his bed. He would try to run away as we were putting him on the bus, and we did everything we could in our power to assist. My son, as a result of that year, was diagnosed with acute stress disorder, and according to the psychiatrist, it was a direct result of the teachers and their actions towards him. They told him he was stupid, they told us that he was lying, they told him that if he told anybody what he was told, they would say that he was lying. And ironically enough, his twin brother was in the room for a portion of this day, and the twin brother happens to be also on the autism spectrum and has echolalia. The twin brother would come home and repeat things like, "Now, Matthew, if you go and tell everybody that we said this, we're just going to tell everybody that you lied." My son's vocabulary is spent on nothing more than lines repeated from other people. Clearly, this came from somebody. I, as a result of Matthew's acute stress disorder diagnosis, took him to a psychiatrist and had to have him medicated to get into the front door of school last year. I, once a week, drove him to Children's Specialized Mountainside to go to psychology for cognitive behavior training and therapy in order to have him get into the front door of school in fourth grade. We now have a multitude of mental health diagnoses as a direct result of this. I'm asking you, as parents, what would you do if your child said this to you? How would you react? My child begged me to not send him to school. My child has psychiatric diagnoses as a result of this. I brought this to everybody's attention. I was told he was making it up. I was told he was lying. I was told I was blowing everything out of proportion. I asked for evaluations. The district instead filed due processes on me, telling me that those evaluations were not necessary. Not only were they necessary, they brought out points of his educational date that were not being met, and they shared every point that he needed assistance on that had not been met up until that point. Because of this meeting, we had had mediation agreement. All I asked was for that agreement to be followed. All I asked was for the recognition that my child now has multiple mental health diagnoses as a result of the teachers not doing their jobs and as far as Dr. Schiff ignoring it.
Mrs., no.
I, I need an apology. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, I'm just sorry, but, you know, the context.
You can cut me off, but I still need an apology. You've ignored my child's education. What are you going to do about it from here on out?
Disparaging the good staff that have worked with your children without them having an opportunity to defend themselves is inappropriate, and it won't be tolerated here. There are extraordinary staff members who have and continue to work with all children with special needs, as well as regular education children, who do an extraordinary job. To stand at that podium and disparage them is inappropriate and out of order.
I'm asking for an apology. That's out of order.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sladek. This is a public comment. You've had your comment. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we'll continue on with the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education: to approve travel and related expenses, to approve the HIP determination list as per the attached, to accept the award of fiscal year 17 IDEA grant, to dispose of science textbooks, to approve staff member being paid through IDEA funds, and to approve teachers participating in workshop model 2.0. Also to approve teachers to administer the measure of developing English Language, DELL, students, to approve the textbooks adoptions as reported out of education, inclusive of common assessment and curriculum writing, as well as the revised math curriculum for TP and all of the revised science curriculum that Mrs. Haas reported out. Also to approve the submittal of the statement of assurance for the 2016-2017 district professional development and district mentoring plan. That's all in that area.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.12. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the recommended motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the resignations and retirements, including the retirement of Mary Beth Loughlin, one of our social workers who has been here at Woods Road School. Her retirement would be effective November 1st. She has worked in this district for 30 years, and we appreciate all of her time, effort, and energy serving the children of this community. Also to approve transfers and changes in assignments, to approve leaves of absences as listed, to approve the appointments as listed for teachers, school nurses, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, lunch aid, coaches, and substitutes. Also to approve transportation aides and drivers for this school year, as well as approve extra-period coverage and sixth-period coverage. To approve summer work, extended school-year programs for staff, and approve student teachers. Also approve the High School Media Center extended hours, as we've done in prior years, to rescind the employment contracts due to clerical errors of two employees, and to approve the revised employment agreements.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.16 of the agenda. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda.
Yes, finally, I ask for the board's consideration of the motions that I'm making under the area of operations, to approve monthly financials, bills list, line-on-em transfers, to accept the donation of a new trombone for Eras music program, and authentic Kenyan artifacts. We thank Cindy and Ted Ceciano and Wolfgang Snyder for their donations. Also to approve various settlement agreements, and to approve the resolution to participate in Sustainable New Jersey for school. Also approve the agreement with the Food Service Management Company, as reported out of the Operations Committee report. And to approve various transportation renewal and contract awards for, for routes that were non-renewed. To approve athletic routes, as well as field trip transportation contracts, and to approve the added district placements for 2016-2017.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.13 of the action agenda.
So moved.
I have a second. I'd like to separate out 10.8. So this will be for items 10.1 through 10.7 and 10.9 through 10.13. Any discussion?
Yeah, so we, I think, Tom, you had a question for superintendent earlier today about the Sustainable Schools New Jersey that I just.
That's 10.8. That'll be in a separate.
Oh, can we, can I?
Oh, you want?
I'll just do it now.
Fine.
So was that a, is that a, and so I also have a question about it. Maybe I want to separate you two.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe, maybe I'm going to separate you two from you.
Okay.
Maybe. But, but I have to find out first. Is it different from the one, how is it different from the one that we passed last year or in June, June 2015? Didn't we do a Sustainable Schools New Jersey Resolution 2015? Is this for a different Sustainable Schools New Jersey? And are we doing anything with the resolution that we passed last year?
Good question. Mr. Gillette, I think you asked a couple of questions there.
Yeah, I did. Asked about four questions.
Yes, and I'll try to answer maybe three. As far as the, the, all, I can just present you with the facts. At the moment, the board is not a part of Sustainable Jersey. We've made that phone call. If a resolution is not passed tonight, we're not a part of Sustainable Jersey. There was a resolution that I read that, that we shared and that is, that was passed by the board. I believe that that had, that I believe a person was named in that, and it talked about the person holding responsibility. To be honest, I don't know where that went and where it is today.
Okay.
All I can say is that the board tonight, if approved, this resolution would actually make us a part of Sustainable Jersey. What happened prior, I just don't have an answer to.
All right, so maybe we passed a resolution that wasn't really acted on. We need a current resolution to be part of it.
I'm assuming, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to separate, I'm going to vote for it.
Well, no, I'm, we're separating out. That's fine.
I'm always going to separate, all right.
Yeah, it's, I'm separating. So again, this is discussions with regard to 10.1 through 10.7 and 10.9 through 10.13. All items outside of that.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes. The whole, for the whole thing except for 10.8.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item 10.8.
So moved.
I have a second. Okay, as you can tell, I was opposed to it when we voted on it last year, and that was with regard to, to be able to obtain a, a grant with regard to wellness, health and wellness. And my, my opposition to joining is, remains consistent. It's a, it's a nongovernmental organization that provides certification for pursuing different requirements that they list. I think it's more important, we have higher priorities where we should be focusing, prioritizing our resources and staff. So for example, one of the requirements is to form a green team, and that team includes representatives from the school board, district leadership, union leadership, and at least one representative from each of the individual schools participating in the program. I'm not willing to, 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 to pay for any staff's time to be pursuing this, so that would have to be done voluntarily. And then there's a number of different actions that have to be done in order to get certification. And again, I think a lot of the things that we, that this strives for, we are doing anyways. I just don't feel the need to, to join a group to say that we're doing it and get a recognition for it. Again, it's a prioritization, I rather prioritize to, to the educational pursuit for this district than, than pursuing a certification for a sustainable program. And again, they have a list of many different things that, that in order to receive certification, they need to do. Includes things like curriculum, which is more of a state standard and that we do. So again, I have an opposition to this nongovernmental organization dictating it. That's all. That's me. Any other discussion? Mr. Cohen?
I support happily my president, albeit not for all the same reasons. I don't believe we should be turning over responsibility to some nongovernmental, I don't know what you call it.
Organization.
Organization, lack of definition, somebody controlling, deciding how, informing us what, and telling me how much to spend on whatever we can do on our own. There's some worthwhile goals. Nobody can argue about wellness, nobody can argue about wellness for our, our staff and our students. And certainly, these are some worthwhile energy consumption. We're very proactive on this, so I don't think we should be spending any money or any time or effort to join this organization. We don't need it. It's, it's duplicative, and then we're turning things over to somebody else. We're the board. Thirty, forty years ago, nobody was telling us we had to join some group in order to decide to do the right thing. We know how to do the right thing.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
No.
Motion passed.
Is it majority, or you need a majority of the board?
Actually, we have majority of the board.
Is it majority or majority of the board?
Present voting.
Present voting?
You said it passed, that's why we have to go in there. We're carrying the big bucks.
Okay, now I'd like to open it back up to comments from the public. Okay, seeing none. Any announcements or statements from board members, as we typically do? Mr. Cohen?
Just wanted to make it, file on a little bit, on Mr. Gillette's comments regarding the athletics bus, and I'm hoping Dr. Schiff would pull through on this. I think our seat deserves some sort of resolution, and I think it's professional of us to work hand in hand. Considering all that we've been through with bus companies, it's an olive branch, maybe it comes back to us, you know? Throw your brother across the water, so to speak, so if we can give them a benefit. I don't think there's anything wrong with the temporary schedule, given that they're going to know it's temporary, and I think, given the semantics of what can go wrong with a schedule, they're as much a human as we are. We hear things, we see weather reports, we know things are going to go awry. I don't think they're going to be upset.
As promised, we'll definitely take a look at it.